A call to order, a regular session of the Board of Education of Pearl River County School District, being held July 21st, 2022, beginning at 5:00 PM, 5:30 PM, at Endeavor Campus Chapel 461, Burrington Road, Carroll, Mississippi. Ms. Burge, would you lead us in now, invocation please?
I want to come to you and ask that you protect our children on the board heads in our schools and districts. I ask that you protect our security enforcement and ask that you revive our teachers and lift their strength and have them ready to come back for fresh school years. I ask that you protect our children more and have them ready to come back to school. I ask that you help us in this amazing demand to do things according to the rule that blesses and benefits our school. Just thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Burge. Mr. Jones, would you lead us in now, pledge of allegiance, please?
Please stand for pledge, attention, salute, pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, "One nation, unified, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, in God we trust."
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Normally it would be the time we'd have public comments, but we see we have none on the one signed up, so no public comments. Could I have a motion to consider the agenda? Thank you, Ms. Burge. Do you have a second? Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Any discussion on the agenda? I'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the agenda, let them indicate they're saying yea. Yea. Any opposers? There be none. Agenda is approved. Could I have a motion to consider approving the board minutes of June 9th, 2022, June 27th, 2022, and June 23rd, 2022? Have a motion. Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor of approving the board minutes from June 9th, June 27th, June 23rd, let them indicate they're saying yea. Yea. Any opposers? There be none. Minutes are approved from those that mind. Brings us down to our superintendent report and I'd like to recognize Dr. Bowden here for our first time as superintendent. Certainly appreciate you willing to step up and congratulate you also on being selected. Dr. Bowden.
Thank you, Superintendent. Welcome to the July 21st. Our student will be chosen in September. We will have a student. You do have your monthly financial dividend. You also have an MSA TV schedule, a package, and an audit report. And TJ will be our supervisor.
You have Bane Hall and Chilwell and our classroom are included in the TV that started that moving in. They're actually used to now. Our maintenance team, how we would create the storage closets for the shelves, those closets that's in its setup next to it. I think the only one that they had, the maintenance and Chilwell classroom. The network for that building will be moved to be aligned by a solid school. And I'm still speaking to the September. I have completed building. I haven't received another one. They contracted for us. They're estimated to be last time we met, I can tell you, they said they had to go by July.
I have to say, I agree.
I'm going to say this. The. We have received the. Oh, I have one, two, and three. There are one boxes. There's ways to. Bring in the Bane Hall.
Yes, I see. It's a big glaring hole. Could have been on the backside and wouldn't see that's right.
So. The next project that we did is sound complete is the elevator in town before. The Vodkamis, maybe Spat, that's where we's are down there. We will load the first games, our next Friday, it's July. I mean, it's summer. The theme, but so I don't need that. That's a day empty bound three, that's a degree of. Cade Hall Library and Bane Hall renovations, all of that looks complete. I'm just waiting on some furniture to be delivered to the library. It's a bookshelf so they can, they can get moved in for the start school. But all of that work, we're correct, Cade Hall was the last thing that we wrapped. And it finished yesterday. And I'm in a school that actually started moving into that, into that building. I think the building came out very nice. For how, what building is, it came out very nice, very nice. And we actually added something that, that once we toured the ceiling grid out of the contractor came to me. That, you know, we can do insulation in this entire building for $10,000. And it's going to greatly affect the energy build, that building also. We, we don't do insulation. The chair dance practice facility that was thrown up last, last month of the foundation. We put that out for bids, received a bid yesterday. That's on the agenda tonight. We received one bid for $675,500. The every, in that bid, everything is included in the bid with the exception of the wall wearers, the practice, the practice of flooring, and the audio system. The reason is we didn't put those items in there is flooring is a very specialized floor. And we didn't want a general contractor just making assumptions. When the building's completed, we'll get a flooring specialist in here that's specialized in dancing, cheer, light flooring. The baseball softball concession stand and restroom project, that's also on the agenda tonight. We received two bids, the lowest being just over 264,000 dollars. We had in fund 3027. We've already budgeted 120,000 dollars for that. So if the board chooses to go forward with that project, we'll come, we'll have to come back in August. And that's just small money, adding that fund to, to build that building. Central office, so the architect, we've gone back and forth with the architect a few times. At one time we got the chair dance and since we included it back, that came in over, I don't know, four, three million dollars. Way too much. We asked him to go back to the board to just do basic offices in the boardroom. That estimate came in just under three million dollars. Again, it's way too much for, for a central office. And so Mr. Graham and I have been looking at the possibility of using H Building at the elementary. That was one of the original buildings that we looked at using, you know, two, two years ago when we were finishing up the elementary projects, construction projects down there. And the only problem is with that building is we can't afford and have enough room to put all the central office staff in there. So we have enough room for 20 offices and a conference room and all the storage space that we need. But we don't have enough room to put boardroom in that, in that building. So we just need a little guidance from the board. Would like to just continue using the middle school library or the chapel as their boardroom. That's, that's. But if, if that's okay with the board to use that as the boardroom, we could probably get started on that project soon and be in that building by Christmas time. We, I estimate about 150,000 dollars trying to make that building. We wouldn't have to do much other than check out floors, ceiling grid, and put up some walls in the classrooms. So it's, he's estimating about 150,000 dollars to do all the work.
Are it's an house project?
No, it would be a contractor. If the bids come in higher than 150, we can look at doing it in house. It's just going to take, it'll take more time, of course, because we probably, we have two guys that are really capable of, I think, works. And work orders and other projects, regular stuff, we take a bid while they're working on it. So. Like I said, we, we can do that, but it's going to always deny the business, forget the business. If it comes to you.
Well, what would be the problem you do that seven million dollars more to pay for boardroom?
In the auditorium. We'd like to meet in there. I can answer that.
Yeah, nobody has a big crowd.
You can fill a thousand people in there. Invite all your friends, eh? Let's see, so like I said earlier during our budget presentation, we have about 2.6 million dollars remaining in fund 3027. If all of those projects, central office, chair dance, and concession stand, take into account that we already have 120,000 approved for the concession stand. It would be another 970,000 dollars if we come to that fund, would you believe, to do another 1.6 million dollars in fund. Just keep in mind that we do have the access control and door locks. That project is still in design. I don't know how to estimate the cost on that. I didn't throw a number out, I would say 80,000. But like I said, I don't have, I don't have hard numbers to calculate. So just do that. Next on our board, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Jones.
We've been having a really busy summer. Our, our members showed us up on to Mass, the Mississippi Association of Schools for Rendit, the Mass Conference. We learned a lot from the Mississippi Department of Education, always there with those updates. We also just got back from our Renaissance Conference. And Renaissance is school culture, climate, and social emotional learning. And we even had two of our teams present at the conference. And these, that conference is a global conference. And to have our people present at this conference is amazing. So we had a team from Middle School run by Eddie, who's Alexander, and a team from High School headed by Miss. I'm just wondering where the short shorts were of those.
While standing, I can remember that.
And then we also had a team from the Endeavor School attend an SRAB conference. And that's a national conference in the Bay. It's been awesome. So we're really excited that we have something to give globally to other school districts. We have technology trainings throughout the month. We had, this Tarrel Olson has been doing those trainings for us. And it's for our new teachers as well as our veteran teachers on using Google and a bunch of other tools that our teachers could use in the classroom. We've had, we have cleaning and waxing going on and construction. If you hadn't seen the Cade Hall, y'all need to come take a walk. It is beautiful. It looks really great. It does look like a sad going. So we have lots of things getting ready to happen. We have, our new teachers will be here on July 29th. And we're super excited to welcome our new Blue Devils. August 1st through the 3rd is our staff professional development. We have meet the teacher. Super excited to have again the teacher. We couldn't do it last year. And that will be August 7th, and it's 2 to 5. And you have these dates on, I think that my class second packet. 2 to 5 for elementary and then 5 to 7 for high school and middle school. And then August 4th is our first day school for our students. And we're super excited to welcome them back. A couple of school specific important things. We have August 2nd is our kinder ride home. And it's super cool. The, the kids and parents get on the bus and then they, they ride to elementary school in that way. It's easier for those kinders to ride those buses when it's time for them to do it by themselves. And then at the middle school, we have sixth grade orientation on July 28th. And then at the high school, we have our senior night on July 25th, and our freshman orientation on July 29th. So we are busy, busy, busy getting all of that stuff prepared. I do want to remind you that our next orging will be at the middle school, the middle school library. And that's all I have for our superintendent orging. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bowden. And I think we'll come in there also on the, the audit finance. We had a very current external audit on our finance and after that, three very small findings and then the jury. Also, we had excellent audit, no mistakes. We appreciate all our finances, or stealing them. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Could I have a motion to consider approving the following financial items? And if in course of choosing, will they get items A through R? Item A through R. Could I have a motion?
I have a motion to consider approving financial items A through R.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do you have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burge. Any discussion of financial items? Not a call for a vote. All in favor of approving a financial item like A through R, that indicate they're saying yea. Yea. Any opposers? There be none. Motion passed, dismissed. Could I have a motion to consider accepting our bids received for the chair and dance practice facility and awarding the contract to Mitch Coe in the amount of 675,500 dollars?
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Burge. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Discussions over there. Any discussions?
We have an estimated 40,000 dollars to give if we want it.
In the, in the bid specs, I asked him for March 31st. But once we do the contract, we'll, we'll really get back to it. I spoke to the gentleman today and his biggest concern forces the metalwork, the unit hand order. That's, that's got to be.
I also had a question. In the bid, it said that that was for the building itself and it didn't include the acoustic panels. Is that something that would be hard to come back in on a later date and add?
So he, he did an all of it. He, he made the base was a lot of current things, 90,000. And he added the acoustic panels if we did it on them. I think we need the acoustic panels. One, it's going to make it look better. Two, with dancing cheer, it's going to go on and it's going to sound like this room if we go on. And also the energy, you know, instead of cooling 35 feet in the air, you're only cooling 20 feet in the air. So it's, it'll help out.
Where is the proposed location again for the dance cheer facility located?
That's where, where the old maintenance trailer was by the carrier. Where that big parking lot is, there's a green space there. Where we dumped a lot of clay in that area in preparation for this. The other guy, the architect, said it would be good for us to dump a lot of clay and things that dirt there. They help dry that area.
Is it from the home?
Yes, right.
Closest to the schools or on the other side of the block that actually was a farm?
No, it would be close to the school. So on this, on the school side of the building, they have a new parking lot place back there. And it's, it'll, it'll bring back to that. It'll be right around Saturday morning. And a lot of.
And again, you said that this 675,000 dollars, it doesn't include the flooring, the mirrors, the acoustic ceiling, and outdoor sound system?
It includes, it includes the acoustic ceiling. It doesn't include the mirrors, the audio, the floor.
And we really don't have any potential costs in that, so. Not right now. Any other questions? Carl Foulle, all in favor of accepting the needs of the chair and dance practice facility and awarding the contract to Mitch Coe in the amount of 675,500 dollars? With the understanding that a real thing that would happen to that person, that many, they say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? There be none. Motion passed, unanimous. Could I have a motion to consider accepting our bids received by the Saffron Concession and Freshrooms and awarding the contract to Charles Langmore in the amount of 264,030 dollars? Have a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Do you have a second? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Have a discussion.
That was one question. That was a significant difference between the two bids. But Mr. Long and Mitch Coe Company was A, B, and C. Why that was a big difference between those two?
I can't answer that. So Marcus Slowbuck, for Mitch Coe's out of, has heard. Did any different materials, Mr. Marcus, the contractor, that did the drainage project and all of the sidewalks out there, maybe just for. Both of me.
So we've had some experience with Mr. Long. He's also the man, I think, all the basins. He's the one that worked for us back here, very, very good. Any other questions? Carl Foulle, all in favor of approving our bids and also awarding the contract for the major Saffron Concession and Freshrooms to Mr. Charles Langmore in the amount of 264,030 dollars? That indicate they say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? There be none. Motion passed, unanimous. Could I have a motion to consider approving pay application 24 to Commonwealth Construction Company?
Motion to consider approving pay application 24 to Commonwealth Construction.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Burge. Discussion. Only thing I'd just like to, with Mr. David, to push it back. Be glad we didn't get to the end of that particular project. I did pass by the other day. Just kind of looked around. I didn't have to go inside, but I'm tempted to go in this ticket a little bit.
I got some reassuring things from the architect's project ground today. He said that they were going to be working some odd hours or. So I guess that's, that's a question.
Because the longer they, they work on it, the more costly it is to get to finish that building. I think they would probably be motivated as well with trying to finish that project. Any other comments or questions? I'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving pay application 24 to Commonwealth Construction Company? That indicate they say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? There be none. Motion passed, unanimous. Could I have a motion to consider consenting children? And that's a kind of A through P. I have A through P. Have a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Do you have a second? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Carl Foulle, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, that indicate they say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? End of discussion. Any opposed? There be none. Motion passed, unanimous. Could I have a motion to consider approving down the policies, have a motion for section GAA through TBAAV with the exception of GDR? Have a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Burge. Do you have a second? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Discussion.
Like I was mentioning, these policies, there were no changes recommended for them. They are, they're written policy. We haven't put this point in town. This go to our normal review process and have no change recommended to those policies. Carl Foulle, all in favor of approving section GAA through TBAAV? That indicate they say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? There be none. Motion passed, unanimous. Could I have a motion to consider approving PRC administration recommended revisions to policy GAR and JGHR?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Have a second. Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Any discussion?
Again, those policies had some very minor revisions. I think it's some policy changes that references the substance of the policy set was not changed from there. So Carl Foulle, all in favor of approving PRC administration recommended revisions to GAR and JGHR? So Carl Furu, all available approval, PRC administration recommending revisions to GAR and JGHR. They don't indicate that saying yay.
Yay.
Yay. In opposedes, there be none motion passion elders. And having a motion to consider approving PRC administration recommending new policy LGDB. Have a motion.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Harry. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, for discussion.
Is there someone that can kind of explain this a little bit? Do you think, um, what exactly, uh, of the law they want on program has a wide degree there?
The recall from that, is that the million dollars?
Yes, the project administration contract awards procedure. We had it on last month's agenda.
Yeah, that's a, a new program that will, uh, start July first. Uh, a lot of districts borrow for the million dollars for, um, different improvements to the, to the schools. Uh, and it's, it can be borrowed for up to ten years, six years through. Uh, so it's, it's a loan that may stay. So borrowing, uh, that.
It's just nice to have a little model card out there.
Yeah, it's a bit.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And we were following again, our policy adoption process. It gives the board an opportunity to have been discussed at last meeting. It gives the board an opportunity to go home and think about it, locate, see if they have any questions. So again, that's how this process is going for it. It was a new policy introduced last month. So again, if you have any other questions on that policy. If not, Carl Furu, all available approval, PRC administration recommending new policy LGDB. They don't indicate that saying yay.
Right.
Yay. In opposedes, there be none motion passion elders. Carl Furu, motion to consider approving MSBA recommended revisions. We'll take this for two parts, two policies. JC, DAC, JGC. We'll take them one, take them separate. Uh, all available approval, MSBA recommended revision to policy JC, DAC. Have a motion. What we just, to, to choose, to choose now? Yeah, we got it. We have the choice of this motion. We gotta consider approving MSBA revisions. So we have to choose one of these two revisions to look at this last one. What motion would it be to discuss options, uh, opposite A or B? There were two recommended revisions in the policy, uh, vision A or B. We have to decide which one of those two that we want to incorporate into our policy.
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Burge. Have a second.
Are we, I'm sorry, to make a motion to, to go one and two, or are we?
Right, then we listen to the policy JC, DAC.
Okay.
We want to discuss and select one of the two options, option A or B.
So the motion needs to be A, right?
Aye.
Does the motion need to go ahead and choose A or B? Or is the motion discussing?
Discussing G one.
Discussing G one.
Uh, yeah. Discussing which one.
Yeah. So what we're doing for this particular motion, we're looking at policy JC, DAC. To discuss it and to choose which one of the options from our board.
How much of that motion does it discuss?
So is there, is there a motion? Maybe it's motion to discuss and select.
On second.
You made the motion.
Second.
No, I thought you made the question.
Ms. Burge made the motion. What's that motion second?
I'm still not clear on. We wanted to discuss.
Discuss and select.
And select.
Discuss and select. We have to select one of these two options, option A or option B.
Well, in that case, I'll make a motion to select.
What is that motion?
Okay. Uh, okay, hold on a second. You have to select it. You can respect the motion.
I would like to make a motion that we, um, discuss and choose an option either A or B.
Have a second. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Discussion, option A or B.
Um, I have some discussion on that, Mr. President. That's okay.
Yes.
Um, option A is, um, I don't have much faith in, but it's basically saying that we will not be administering cannabis, medical cannabis to our children or allowing nurses to do that. Option B is saying that the district will allow the administration of medical cannabis in the same manner as other medical prescriptions and applies to the Mississippi Medical Cannabis Act. Um, I wholeheartedly believe that we need to make sure that we allow our students and our staff to have the right to any sort of medication if they need necessarily. State of Mississippi is now saying that medical cannabis is part of the medical program. It would be as if we tell our students you can't have pain medication or antibiotics at our schools. If we're gonna allow any medication to be administered, then it needs to be open to medical cannabis as well. Also, I have received our, um, I think these some of these out monthly, our MSBA updates. And in this, um, Mr. Austin Gilbert, he's the MSBA policy and legislative manager. And he put in here that employers do not have to modify any job or working conditions of any employee that engages and uses medical marijuana. And so I just wanted to give that information to the board. Um, and I do feel like if the board poses that, then I would like to at least take this until we have a medical officer that we can have come in here and are actually educated, um, before we make that decision.
I think we'll take that, Mr. Jones. I think, uh, I think this is number one. I think the, um, the amendment comes in, uh, two.
They both, it's, it's actually in both policies.
I think, I thought of one was just whether, uh, can be used on district property.
Well, option A, it says the district does not allow the use of medical cannabis while on district property.
So, so again, option A, you need, there are two different things here. Uh, this is being captured on my, this is being recommended revisions. And as you stated, option A says the district does not allow the use of medical cannabis while on district property. Then option B says the district shall be allowed to administer medical cannabis in the same manner as other medical prescriptions and it aligns with Mississippi medical cannabis. So first of all, the policy is not about the merits of using medical cannabis as nothing but medical merits. It's about whether the school should participate in the administration. Now, I want to remind the board that we have a policy already in the district that says, uh, medical cannabis is not allowed by state. The, uh, Mississippi Medical Council, they say that school districts are not required to permit, accommodate, or allow the medical use of medical cannabis. That's what the law states. The school district doesn't have to do this. Okay, so this is not about giving medical cannabis a good pay. It's about whether the school wants to participate in the administration of it. So this policy is stated.
I, I have a, I have an opinion and I don't, I don't think it's, uh, I don't, I, I still know enough to make a call. But I do know that it's too early for us to jump in, in my opinion. And, uh, I'm making most of the two. I want to choose option A.
The JC, DAC.
JC is.
So Mr. Harry made the motion to select option A, which is the district does not allow the use of medical cannabis while on district property. And this is, Harry, Mr. Jones seconded the motion.
Is this a pleasanter discussion since those are on the table?
No, we can get motion and second to discuss and discuss.
I still would like to urge the board, as you said, Mr. Harry, and you don't know enough about it at this time, to at least take it, unless we're getting medical professionals that know about this stuff. Bring in Mr. Posey, who is gonna know of probably a lot more about this, and that's the students that are gonna be needing procedures and things of that nature. I would urge the board to please, let's bring in somebody that knows something about it, to where they can educate us to make a great decision for our children and not take something away from them that could potentially help them greater.
One problem is that we're gonna be starting school this meeting. So, uh, I don't know if the policy that stands now, if we table this, or the policy that stands now, are we able to?
Well, medical cannabis will need to be available until December, is what State of Mississippi is saying.
I would think that, uh, I would still, I wonder if marijuana, if we have a policy in place for that right now. Let's not.
That's right. It doesn't say.
Cause as of right now, if they, if they don't have their card, if they don't have their medical cannabis, then they don't have marijuana to give them. It wouldn't get until December when they start allowing the medical cannabis to be given out, that they wouldn't have access.
I feel like at this point, it draws a line in the sand because someone can come in from, you know, another state where they received it or have a card and move here, whatever. And I think it draws a line in the sand. It's like, right now, we're not allowed, you know, it's, it's.
Now, I also want to remind the board that, uh, board of supervisors, the county also voted to, uh, uh, participating in medical cannabis in terms of the, uh, the dispensaries of grain, they vote, uh, they stopped.
And I would like to also respectfully, like you know, that Mr. Park, he still said the only reason that he opted out of this is because he saw a sign in Florida that said free fifty Friday. Um, and I just, I do not agree with that. And then the, uh, city of Rockville did opt in and will accept it and. And I just don't feel like if you don't know enough about a subject, which you should draw a line at the same time, for something that potentially could help somebody without giving some information from a physician that knows better than what we know.
Well, I think at this point, it's about enforcement of the ones who are doing wrong.
Well, the enforcement's already there. We, if a child is called or a student or staff is called with marijuana, and that is a direct violation, we can straighten the general, we have laws to, we have policy for that. You are stripping somebody's right to be able to use something natural instead of having to use pharmaceutical company medications. And I feel like to take that away from our students is a tragedy and a tragedy, at least without speaking to some, some physicians to clarify this one.
This, this policy does not take away the right of the students to participate in medical cannabis. It is, it's saying that the school will not participate in administration. The address that's gonna do the, again, the value of it or the minimum of what people take it, saying the school is not participating for the policy.
And I understand that, but if, if a nurse is gonna give a child a pain pill or gonna give a child some antibiotics, they should be able to give them whatever else they need. If that prevents a child from having a seizure or whatever else that our child may need at the front, just don't think it should be taken off the table that easily without bringing in someone that knows more about it than what we do.
I'm going to, uh, ask Dr. to, to get any comments on, uh.
I agree with, um, Burge. We don't have to make that decision right now. We have until December. So, um, it does get, start this, it's, it's. Um, I, I think those, uh, some of our children do need it for seizure disorders. Um, it, I think it's gonna be. We, we worry about, I worry about, um, the dispensing part and what it's, the work it's gonna take, we don't know. We, we don't know enough yet about how it's gonna look. Um, and how, how our children are gonna be dispensed, how we're gonna have to dispense it. Um, so.
That's why I think it would be a great idea to have a physician come in and explain these things.
I don't have a problem with, with, with dispensing pharmaceutical products for students. If a doctor describes the medication to a student.
But you're saying you don't have a problem with pharmaceuticals, but you have a problem with medical cannabis.
Right.
So you're using your own personal ideas of what medical cannabis is without asking the doctor to make that decision.
The only thing that we have in place right now to regulate medicine is new pharmacies.
The medical cannabis will not go to a pharmacy, and that lets me know right now that you don't know anything about this program, Mr. Jones.
Well, I would not go to the, the options.
Because they don't sell for medical cannabis in the pharmacy. You get a medical card from a doctor and then you have to go to a dispensary in order to get what you need that that doctor has told you that you're not sure.
In the pharmaceutical process. These drug companies can, they do wonderful things, extract different medicines from, whatever they get it from. And put it in a pill or a tablet form or anything like that. So they're doing all that.
Well, I don't know how much medicine you have to take, provide, but I take about seven pills every single night. They come with awful side effects. Boiling, makes you, um, sleep all the time. I don't like going to all of the side effects they have. Medical cannabis does not have that. And, um, I don't wanna sit here and argue which is right, which is wrong, but I do think that in order to make a valid and good decision on this, and I've never fought this board on any policy as long as I've been here, four years that we've been here. I'm simply asking to take this and to have a physician come in and at least hear a doctor tell me how this is gonna go down and then make that decision from there.
Again, I don't think the fight is whether it works or whether they need it. I think it's about putting our staff at any sort of risk or, you know, um, if it's a, if it's a pill, they, you know, they get one. If it's a, uh, liquid, they get as much ingested or whatever. But we don't, we don't know what's gonna be allowed. What, what would you say? What form it's gonna be allowed in. So I think, I think that's a big part of it, too.
Why wouldn't you be, um, apprehensive about having a professional come in? I don't, I don't understand why we can't take this to the next meeting because our policies right now.
And, and I'm not a principal, but I do know that this policy can be brought up next month and then follow it up. I think, personally, I think we'll make a call on it. And it can always come back up. We can, we can request any policy come to the, come to the.
It's a process for policies to come back up, you know, before.
It's gonna come up every year anyway.
Right, it's, and you, you, but they, you know, it's just not automatically one person requests. But again, and I just want to respect that this policy is not about the merits of what medical cannabis works about. Because if parents choose to allow their kids intervention, the kids, they can treat our cannabis. Just this policy, a lot of the schools, when in terms of participating in administration, that, that gave a medical candidate that, that would pass, say that the school are not required to permit or accommodate, or allow the use of medical cannabis on cannabis. And that's what the law states. And there was a motion on the floor and a second to select option A, which was to, the district does not allow the use of medical cannabis while on district property. Which would, would have to go over there. I would have that motion and second. And let, let somebody table that second.
Unless what? Can I make a motion to type?
Table, they never have their second and put on that.
Well, I would at least like to make a motion that we table it until next month, and then a physician coming in towards choosing to give us more information about what we're looking at.
So the verge is being a subsequent motion to table this discussion of also J C D A C and a selection of options. Is there a second? There be none motion papers. The vote will revert back to the original motion. End of discussion by Call for a vote. Call for a vote. All in favor of selecting option A, which is the district does not allow the use of medical cannabis while district property is a K. And again, any opposedes?
Nay.
The motion passed three one with this verge rejected. So now we would actually be voting for a subsequent policy now that we selected an option. This will be the overall policy, totally optional. All in favor of approving policy J C D A C with option A. That again, they say yay. And yay, opposedes?
Nay.
Nay. This person said nay. Motion passed three one for this election. Option A for policy J C D A C. A call for a motion to consider approving any provisions J G C D and selecting option A or C. And I want to remind the board that this is a policy action and policies. Call for a motion to consider and approve of option J G C D and selecting an option. Thank you, Mr. Harry, if you have a second.
Is there any other option?
And then they selected an option, we got them. Selecting an option just like we gave the other policy. Consider the policy and selected an option. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Discussion. Yeah, these are the pending options. They go together.
What are the difference between A and C?
A and C. Okay, the difference between A and C, I'm actually gonna be able to most prepare. Right now, we have a policy in place that allows the administration to have right to. If you select option A, it takes that away, and then it will be.
All.
Takes all of that away if you select option A. That means that we will no longer be able to administer any medicine.
Oh, medicine, okay.
But so then, and also, if you select option A. Yeah, we have to read them really close. Took a lot of it for you there. Option B states that you will continue to administer medicine that you already do, and also include medical cannabis. And we just voted back to do that in the previous policy. When you select option B, that means you continue to administer medicine and also administer the medical cannabis. And then option C is that we will continue to administer the medication, but not allow cannabis. That's the companion policy that actually we will disapprove of J C D A C. I might question the first option C, I don't think it's sitting. Second, Mr. Harry made a motion that we would select option C with policy J G C D, and Mr. Jones seconded. Discussion. Again, like I said, there is some companion policies. And if you were to swing anything other than option C, then it would be in opposition to the policy we be fighting against. And you know that it is a portion of our name, because they changed the name of policy J G C D. There's already used to be a prescription medication, they changed the name to student health service administration. That's why we see that changing. Call for a vote. All in favor of making option C with policy J G C D, and again, they say yay.
Right.
Yay, any opposedes?
Nay.
Courage, it's nay. Motion passed three one. And then next up is call for a vote to accept policy J G C D with option C. Call for a motion. Thank you, Mr. Harry.
Is that it?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Call for a vote. All in favor of approving policy J G C D with option C. That again, they say yay.
Nay.
Any opposedes?
Not yet.
One motion passed three one. So we're selecting the approved policy J G C D with option C. Now, Mr. Harry did mention again about these policies, I haven't picked up. There is an annual review, and then it's the board's chooses to join the board candidate, and request that we review the policy, and that is a, I say to make the policy review, the board chooses. Call for a motion to consider discussing and reviewing the P O C administrative recommended pieces, policy J G C D A.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Burridge. I would call for a discussion of that. And let me remind you, this is just considered discussing and reviewing, it's not a vote, it's just discussing.
I have a question, and I thought there is a provision, right, that this will reduce, we don't need to reduce the amount of tuition, correct?
Right, this is a discussion to be set.
Is there, what is the reason why we are doing this? Are we needing more students, or we have capacity, how is?
Originally, when we, we decided on the five thousand dollars is because we, we were full, and we didn't have any, our front was hot. Now, we feel like our enrollment is, is lower, so we have the capacity for, and we also know that, that some families can afford the five thousand dollars. So we're gonna make it more accessible.
And Mr. Barros, I think you might can help me with this. Where does these funds go to when we receive the out of, out of county tuition or out of district tuition? What fund does that go into?
This is into the operations that.
Thank you.
Mr. Frezer, what was struck out was five thousand per year for the first child. If you just take all of that out, it says it's two thousand per each student.
Yes, sir.
It's not clear whether that's a semester or a full year.
Or per child. Because it kind of takes away, it doesn't say what it is per child anymore.
No, it says per each student, two thousand per each student.
Oh, yes.
Not that, but it doesn't.
Doesn't have a decrease.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter whether it's more, it's a natural.
I think the intention was per year, and I don't think there will be a decrease.
What is it right now, Mr. Bo, when is it the tuition per semester per year?
It's tuition per year. And it was like, it was written, but it was marked down, five thousand per year for the first child.
Does we just, um?
Yeah, just, we took that, we have.
Present for per year.
Per year, the two thousand per year per student.
That's not a discount.
That's a additional child discount. That will be kept in?
Yes, sir.
That was the discussion about the grandfather clause, and then again, about, because I think what happened, tuition might have been raised at some point in time, and those people that were paying two thousand or whatever it was, but grandfather, and you have that rate, and I have to pay the higher amount, and really that grandfather clause would only come into play if you would raise the tuition level. Because you want somebody, grandfather, you had to hire, that's right, then you lose. Then you stop, and so that's kind of why that grandfather clause was taken out. Again, this is just a discussion of this particular policy, we will be voting on this in the next pool.
Another one I bring up is the provisions.
They have that reviewed. It'll be, it'll be two thousand per, each two per year. The first child discount, the additional child discount. Anything else on that particular policy? Could I have a motion to consider approving Mr. Doug Moon to speak to the board regarding sixteen section land?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Harry, have a second. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Who is this gentleman, and what is his job title regarding sixteen section?
I believe I have spoken to this gentleman, I believe he is a citizen that lives close to some sixteen section land in Beverly, so. I think he has, but I'm not sure exactly everything about him, but he's gonna speak to us about his concerns.
And will there be a time for China? Will there be a time for China?
Yes, and I will speak to him about that, we have policies in place about any issues that only a gentleman speaks to the board, and there is a ten minute timeout for Mr. Moon to speak in there. If he does so speak, and then we will. We do have that. Another gentleman here that's not on the agenda, that the board have any questions they can direct to him, but the other gentleman is not on the actual agenda. So Mr. Moon is the one that's actually on the.
So we have the lady here.
Yes, she's here.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
Go ahead, Mr. Moon.
Are we, are we gonna, we're gonna allow them to be, we allow the asked persons to, they say as well?
You have the asked person, so two cabinets.
We choose to have this, right?
So a call for a vote. All in favor of approving Mr. Doug Moon to speak to the board regarding sixteen section land? That again, they say yay.
Nay.
Any opposedes? There be none motion passion now. Mr. Moon, you're here. Before you speak, I have a couple of comments I want to make. So, so Mr. Moon, you mean, you had a question to be on the agenda, and you kind of got, there was a change in terms of, we kind of missed a few steps here, but did you get an opportunity to see the policy happen, in terms of whether participating, whether commenting, whether hearing to those things?
I would call through Jim's office about two different ladies, and it tells me what I needed to do, and I've requested to speak to the board about this matter. And I said that it will be on the agenda, I would like to hear just a visitor to speak about.
Well, one of the things, again, there are some expectations in terms of the participation on the agenda. You know, certainly, we certainly want to keep everybody on, we did respect to everybody that will, that we know is gonna be a very contentious issue, but again, we expect everybody to be, you know, on the best behavior, obviously. Uh, you will be allowed ten minutes to speak at that time, Secretary Mr. Harry.
I, I've had a little issue with my timer, I mean, actually, I'm always a little telling, so if I have to say it, it's ten minutes almost today. But it should.
I'll show you through.
It should sound, well, it's like.
So, Mr. Harry, we'll be here every time, but maybe we'll need ten minutes, but yeah, so those are some of the conditions that we see a lot we feel that we can deny. So, uh, nothing else to close you with, Mr. Moon?
Well, as being a two-term member of the school board, and eight from that, I'm a little bit familiar with sixteen section. I was, I was on the board when Secretary State took it over, and everybody had a list of nine, nine years for twenty thousand to there. And then when riding out of town, Secretary State took that over, and we ended up sold over there. So I'm a little bit familiar. I respect, y'all know what you do, and I push it. The reason I'm coming to the board is that the proposed or the one office stand is not approved by the Secretary of State already. And, uh, since the area, probably one of the busiest intersections in suburban accounting, say like crossroads, old view road, exciting road, there's been three deaths at that intersection in the last four years. It's about three hundred feet from a church, right across the street. And it's just, it's just an awful location for this particular tolling company to operate. There were several years where you'd get a turn in line there about M dock on Highway four three, but it was so busy. Everybody in, in the community, the exception of none, would have opposed. And I don't have all the second year, I'm gonna leave them, and probably I'm a little bit of their talent. But this is just a little bit of work that I did, signature of people living in the area opposed operations, uh, next year, it's like. It's about three hundred feet, I think, essentially, from the church house. They, they, based all the fields that they play all the time, and distraction of regulars coming in and out. Be a, just another added distraction for people not stopping, and not watching what they're doing. I just hate to see another death there because you can't blame the toll, for, yeah, I understand that. A distraction of anything is not what we need, second. There's a, it was a service station before and stolen, you gotta know, and probably EPA could come to get it, and have it, and give the stat, and peaceful toll places, highway running there, and the tax may have been, they'll be up, they're still on the side. I don't know what tolls for EPA they do to clean that side, which would be a responsibility that should just. Most are absolutely wrecked, and injured, being supposed to mama home is usually when they sit there, they go late some kind, transmission, all, I guess, whatever, so we add it to the contamination, it's probably all there. It's just a thing there. It's just a terrible location everywhere. When I saw the fencing, it was like, I found out about it. The gentleman was out there, and broke the water line at all the previous, we see, per, in water association, you know, what, by those laws. So the toll company, I sat and explained that it would be the least to a toll company. But I felt more than one, I was present to the board, where there were one way or the least. Now, it might have been on the agenda, but as far as them know exactly what it was, the ones I talked to did not know what it was. I think there were some questions asked at that time to have mom. Some of you know me personally, and you ask for a law, I better not miss his dad. So it's a little bit tough, to be honest. But I, I just ask you, I don't, I don't know what could be done now, without a conservative, who loves you, who really consider the least. I just, it could be a detriment to our community, it could be an issue for our community, and it's a location where. This is a terrible question. I, I went up to try to talk, and I think maybe the man too, he had his shirt off up here, so I didn't recognize him, and he. And I don't know why to say this, I did. The word he used when I was trying to explain to him why I was there, he told me exactly what everyone is people signing this thing. He told me exactly what everyone is people that signed this thing is to do here. And also tell me what I could do with it, where I could put it. And I, some English language that I I wouldn't even repeat. And I, so I don't know where he learned English or what kind of language he used for the words, but. I I'm still a little bit shocked.
If you could put back in the comment, just to issue with the lease and that to conversation with the board.
Well, one of the leases that is in a wrong location, it should be reconsidered, please. And I guess, I don't know if that's necessary to base primary school for those people. I didn't work hard at it. About three hundred four hundred people out there, I'm sure that we can add society some hope in that, in that.
Um, before you leave, could you clarify where this location is? Is this um?
Highway forty three south and Salem Road. You have Salem North and Salem South. So at the end of the intersection, you see Salem Stone. James, Stan, that they belong down though, it released to a lady. Fifty degrees later, they burned, building burned and stayed there for a long time. Took the release to, I guess this is the name, yeah, I didn't give his name the other day. But uh, it's, it's been in the sixteen and going to, that's where it was.
Oh, thank you.
Two three way stop, two three way stop there, plus four three north and south.
I mean, before you, I definitely have a question still. So again, I heard you mention before they do that, you know, the school board before. I just want to know, were you aware that the lease had already been executed?
No, not until uh someone showed up, but like we tracked them and started pushing, pushing the old burner building down, cleaning up a lot, that's when we were aware of it.
Now, you you mentioned something about these or whatever, is is it ever already contaminated or you're saying that?
Well, I would, I would say I lived there all my life and then decent tanks had been there and it's a leak there, it's been there. So it's, it's still there. Pumps are all by own force, but the tanks are still all the time that they're having to do.
So, so you you saying that it may be some contamination already on the property, potentially issue?
I I'm not an expert EPA, but I mean, you you can see the visible stuff on ground, I think it's the following category.
And are you also alleging that the lease has officially executed? That the lease survey broke any of the provisions in the company's?
No, no, no. Well, I'm not alleging anything, I'm just asking that we reconsider it because of potential danger to our neighborhood and the risk cost for that there were several deaths already happened.
Any other questions? Just that, what are you asking for us to go for lease? Is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm, not only the other meaning of other, I'm just here to speak for our community.
And is it because of the traffic or trucks that are pulling out that, that you feel like is causing the disaster?
And a distraction there from the previous deaths there, some kind of, so I gotta prove a little bit. I mean, one, the entrances is directly about forty three according to what the fence is there, that he's already put up. And then another entrance is called Salem Road, it's two entrances, so. Maybe he could explain more about that.
Okay. You have no more questions, Mr. Moon? So I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention. Uh, let me ask one more question, but thank you for your attention. So again, I want to mention to the board that Mr. Moon is here on board, that's only agenda tonight to speak on this issue. But the lease survey is here, that if the board have any questions to him, they may come to us on natural. They can actually, naturally, they decide to issue a search violation.
Mr. Frejra, I do have a few questions for the sergeant, if that would be up there in place of board?
All right, Mr. Mr. Rafferty, please, there was some questions on the board.
And if you don't, um, just mention, I mean, just so we know who you are.
My name is John Rafferty, I'm an owner of Big Boss House, Tony.
Okay, thank you. Um, the question that I had is, um, Mr. Moon is worried about the traffic there. Do, do you feel like there's a concern that shouldn't be there about the traffic or trucks pulling out?
Now, ma'am, I think it's gonna help out because uh, from the time that we've been here, we see people cutting from one street to the other street. They're cutting on several of the stop signs, they're taking a left or a right, they're cutting through the parking lot and they're going, they're going through there. Okay, um, and you know, I had, I've got the other tow, you know, other tow yard orders and other places. I know, I know what the process and what I've had to do to keep everything up nice and completely, I've had some in subdivision, I've had some. I had a big facility building up on six oh three, place in Lewis, and uh, you know, as far as part of our district, everybody knew what the sixteen section property looked like before I got there. It might go and go out there, take a look at it now. We got a clean though, we got an underbrush cleaned up. All the racks that was, that was living under the underbrush, all that's gone, it's all nice and clean. So for, I mean, on all the tow yard, I've had, it's always been the adjacent people. But you know, it's always somebody that wants to say something about a lease or something like that. If they, if they want my lease, they want all three hundred, three hundred people pay what I pay for the lease that helps us, helps the school out. They won't be out on their, on their account, because the money that I spend at that, at that place right there helps y'all so. And helps me too, it's all a mutual thing. So all three hundred people that moves to put on their.
If you can just keep your comments to a question.
Yes.
And that was, that was my question, thank you, Mr. Rafferty, I appreciate it.
And or as, or as clean it up, like I said, um, I don't know if you went out there and took some pictures?
No, I haven't, but I'll, I'll go maybe back and tell you.
Yeah, I I would like to take, we got pictures of it before, we'll take pictures of here and uh, you know, you know, we're gonna keep it up. It's not, it's not what everybody thinks it is, it's, 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 it's a tow yard, yes, but we're, if you look at it, you can, you can monitor. I don't, I mean, if it, if it's out of care at the free hour, I mean, I'd pick up the phone, say, hey, Joe, look, we gotta, we need to do something, you know, grass is tall, this or that, you know. We'll, we'll address it, it's kind of a good deal.
Okay.
So I mean, because we're not going to be down in, you know, so, and it's not, it's not like we're building a building, we're not building. What you see there, what you talk about, to be like a whole big yard, yes, yes.
What kind of fence you're gonna put up?
We put up a six foot chain like fence and we're, we're gonna cover it, but like a screen around, you know, so you can't like.
They won't need um the visual lines, okay?
They won't cover it, they won't sign, I don't know, the only thing is gonna help some help from the traffic cut through one side, over to the other side, and that's where. And plus, plus we're gonna be putting up lights, surveillance and everything else right there, so uh, so we'll have a secure map. So we'll know that we're going to go by and be able to save tomorrow's office.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Rafferty, you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and uh, you've been on the property already, you have looked around?
Yes, sir.
Is there some existing contamination on the property?
It was, it was dirty, yes, it was dirty.
And you're saying dirty, what do you mean dirty?
I mean, they had all broke up concrete there, they had a building there, you know, as far as uh, it was gas station. It had, I, it had ice where the tanks was at, I mean, you know, it did, it's like um.
When you say contamination, you're talking about hazards, I understand, but really, I'm talking about hazards, because like. Stuff that EPA would be concerned with, because speed or whatever.
No.
None, non-existent?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would, but yeah, I think somebody already ran out of airway. It's been vacant for how many years?
Uh, no.
Five years for sure.
Did, did you remove a tank?
No, there was just a slab, a concrete slab, and the tanks were sitting on.
But they were gone when you got?
Yeah, the tanks and all that stuff was gone, everything. We just, we just removed the tanks, the brush, the underbrush. So you could see from one street to all the, your back, your back line. So we were cleaning all the, all the trash and all that stuff, we got it out, you know.
And uh, you know, obviously that whenever we move into the neighborhood, you want to certainly be a good neighbor, and that's why I, I, I know that you. Understand the value of being a good neighbor, no matter where you are already.
Oh, absolutely, sir.
You have questions, too? Thank you, Mr. Rafferty, Rafferty. At, at this time, I'm going to state that we will reserve it right, right now to take this matter on the advisory. So that I have a position to make a decision at this time, so we certainly will take this matter on the advisory at this point. So we're. Thank you both, certainly understand the value of being, being good citizens, good neighbors. Uh, we want the best day for our sixteen section property, you know, it does generate gravity for the school system. But at the same time, we also want our commitments as well, so again, we can continue to look at this issue. And, and making sure that we follow everything as our attorney directs us, and we will. You will make a decision, we will certainly, we will have a superintendent able to, to make you back to call.
This woman, I can use to make this petition back, do you need to take that to make copies of it, or maybe have him send you some copies of it?
Yes, sir. Said you would like a copy of the signature? It belongs to Mr. Moon. So, now you would request a copy of the signature?
No, I'm just asking to form if we made it that far, we're in our services.
Yeah, we will be. Okay, again, we're taking away your questions. So thank you both. I um, call for a motion to consider approving the agreement Duncan Engineering for Design and Construction for the Baseball Softball Turkey Project. Call for a motion. Thank you, Mr. Jones, if they are second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Burridge. In this question, approving non-engineering. To the board for the design for the Baseball Softball Turkey Project.
I have a quick question on that one as well. Um, before they put in this turf, Mr. Burrisson, will they be, I know they were saying that they had some issues with the grade of the land. Are they gonna fix all of that before they actually do the turf?
Yeah, but, but this agreement is for Duncan to design the, the base work.
Okay.
Um, for, for both these, and it's, I think last month, they had a big parade coming out and then. Get ready for turf and then the foundation will come here after this works done and later.
Thank you.
Now, I believe you mentioned that if we don't get started with the turf project in a straight time. We would have to wait until next year, that's something that's dealing.
Speaking, speaking to the foundation with uh, Mitchell uh, about two weeks ago in our secret agreement, um. They were, from all the contractors that are better interested in the work that he's spoken to, um. The, the base workers work should be done tomorrow. And then the turf case may be another few weeks, so we're still within our time to get to that person. So what will happen if the board approves this tonight? Then I'll turn that, that agreement over to Duncan, they'll start designing. Uh, I think in the agreement, they, they said that they have about two weeks to do the design work, then they'll put it out for bid. So uh, that was put us at September the, uh, approved the bid, uh, received the bid and, and got approved the bids. So two, uh, and it's work begin after that, September, so I think September the eighth. So they can begin to work from around, or get up five, go to the sea.
So just that we're still within the window, that if we start this project, we may have to finish it before the season?
Yes.
And then if you don't beat it, when the, the design work that they do is not lost, you can just hold it to the next time around.
Correct.
So it's not going to be lost, what we're doing now.
Correct.
And the other thing about it, if you delay, the design piece likely will be hired the next time around, potentially.
If what, what the board is, um, you're basically committing twenty five thousand dollars now, because that's the design's going to cost for it done. Uh, and then the other twenty five thousand dollars is for their construction. Once the project is did, awarded and starts construction, this is one where we'll have to pay another twenty five thousand. Uh, just like, just like, they'll oversee the project, make sure it's done, so they do.
You have questions, discussions? Uh, call for a vote. I would favor approving the agreement with Duncan Engineering for Design and Construction for the Baseball Softball Turkey Project. That indicate they say yay, and, and they oppose us. There'll be none motion, action, and protest. Call for a motion to consider discussing and approving new superintendent job criteria.
Connection?
Thank you, Ms. Burridge. They are second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harrow. Call for discussion of that. All right, then, I have a few things I want to say on the superintendent's search criteria. Part of the process when we had approved MSBA, that's the B R mechanism to conduct a regional search by superintendent. And one of the things he had with his board, also fill out the surveys and the criteria. That we felt was important for us next superintendent, whether it be internal or an external candidate. And then they came back with a report, I could all have seen it, maybe those criterias lifted out. And again, so we, what we need to do is review this and approve this, this was a criteria. And then once we do that piece, this goes back to MSBA. And then they will create the actual job application, which would be submitted to online. So we need to, to approve the criteria that we all have went over. And I'm not sure if everybody, I've been on this, we need to read these criterias, yes, boys, for you. Okay? So these criteria that I'm about to go over is the criteria that the board developed based on a survey that we all took. And this survey was pretty comprehensive, and then from that, it's submitted to MSBA. And then they take that survey and they came back to criteria that the board, uh, built it part. The first thing was evidence of a recent document in track record of rating the achievement level of our students. Evidence of the ability to use data to improve student achievement. A minimum of three years experience in A or B school or district, or experience of moving a school district to an A or B rate. And they felt that this was important because you already had an A B district already. So we want to make sure we look, look for somebody that's from much down, who knows what we're going to improve on those rates. Skill as an effective communicator, including speaking, listening, writing, and technology. The ability to develop a formal process or communicate with stakeholders. The ability to develop a climate of trust and openness with our stakeholders, I think is very important. Willness to maintain an open door policy with our stakeholders. Willness to maintain an open policy with our stakeholders, who's to benefit their students and the history. And is open minded and approachable. Second, uh, group was willingness to have ability to work with our community, the school board, and members, and to keep them informed. Ability to develop a positive role while providing strong leadership to administrators, teachers, and other school personnel. Use a team management approach. They said the ability to develop and to monitor a facility improvement plan and preventive management. Commit to becoming an active and visible member of the community. Ability to engage parents and community in the life of the school. To live in or be willing to relocate to program academy. Evidence of successful leadership in developing, monitoring, and improving curriculum and instructions. Evidence of successful experience in education, human resources, budgeting, federal programs, and performance, athletics, and extracurricular areas. Analysis of strategic planning, including development, implementing, monitoring, and reporting. The ability to recruit, retain, and invest in the development of highly qualified personnel and to be honest and transparent. High moral with ethical standards of conduct and a strong work ethic. I didn't want to mention one of these, uh, you know, you're willing to relocate to program academy. Which was not in this, but I talked with Dr. Anderson. And I told him that was very important that the individual would be willing to invest in the group about that. So again, it was kind of added, it may not show the original reason. So these are the criteria that were developed on the board based on the survey we filled out. Any comments on that? Any of these things you feel like are not approved yet?
I just would like to comment that I'm really glad that you put that in there because I think I feel like, uh, our superintendent needs to be totally invested in our county. So thank you for that.
Yeah, what happened in the survey we filled out, somehow that too, people would have captured in it. But I, I felt it was critical in order to, superintendent is a, and you're part of the community and everything that happens around you. You invest in the students. You want to create that. That's where people want to be here. So it is critical that they also be a part of this community. Anything else? So if the proof is tonight, this will go to Dr. Anderson in the morning. And they will take this and create the actual job announcement. Which will go out on their website and also will be on our website.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the new superintendent job criteria.
Thank you, Ms. Burridge. Just saying. Got it a long time. So call for, call for improving, approving the search criteria for the new superintendent. They did say yay.
Yay.
In the poses. There be none motion passing that. So I will get this to the board. We should give it to Dr. Anderson. The next item is two. Those are the discussion and approving superintendent search next steps. So we should, and also a document will talk about what the next steps are already agreed by our surgeon. We just approved the criteria that we're going to use for the job application. So that's the first one. It'll be going out to, uh, Dr. Anderson tomorrow. The next thing is the board needs to determine the starting date for the new superintendent. And again, so there were a couple of things over here. And because this process is kind of time consuming, it's really difficult to say what date to be used for the start. So the decision for the starting date for the superintendent will be determined by a whole heck of a long process. Discussion on that.
Well, I was going to have to do it that way.
Absolutely.
I don't know if you want to. Oh, sorry.
We did. So I'll make a motion that we can discuss and approve superintendent search next steps.
You know, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Burridge. Thank you, Mr. Jones. So again, talking about the actual starting date for the superintendent is difficult to determine what they would actually be. Because it depends on how this process moves along. You know, if we have to make more decisions, generally takes us to come back to a meeting called a special meeting. So right now it's kind of difficult to actually get the start. Alright, so the suggestion for the starting date for the superintendent will be determined by the board at appropriate time. The next thing, the search announcement will be posted when the board has approved the district criteria for superintendent. And the job announcement must have been created. They'll take the criteria, give them, they'll create the job announcement. We'll get a chance to see it. And then once we see it, we'll be posting. So we've already approved the criteria.
And that's something that will happen in between. Something we would have to approve.
No, we've already, we're going to have to review that once they have created. But it should just include the criteria that we want to give us with that student.
So we won't, we won't, if we all like, we want.
The next thing, the board determines the number of weeks the search will be advertised. And this, they may suggest to say that the job condition is advertised in four weeks, but again, this is up for more discussion. You know, once this goes out, it takes people time to, uh, make decisions. Then they should get out some suggestions in four weeks. And then the next thing was to appoint a district contact to work with MSBA's search manager and communication manager. So again, we've already actually done it. We had some communications. So that this white and this parliament to fill that role of communications with the, the search manager. He got it, Dr. Owen, he got it approved. So that step is already done. So these are the steps that will be done to select the superintendent. And I do want to mention that once the job is created and posted, there is a online survey that goes out to stakeholders at the same time. So everybody, business leader, stakeholders, parents, whatever, are being asked to look at that survey, fill it out. That will be compiled to a report that he comes back to the board. And we use that piece as part of the process to actually select the new superintendent during the end of process. So to make sure we get input from all of the stakeholders. So that survey will go out at the same time as the job posting goes out. Any other questions on this next step? Imagine. Any other questions? Comments? Call for a vote. All in favor of accepting the recommendations for the superintendent next step. That indicated by saying yay.
Yeah.
In the poses. There be none motion passing that. We know the next step will get to Ms. Warren, the superintendent's right to go to, uh, Dr. Anderson. They'll start creating that job posting. And once it's done, the board will get to see it. It goes live. It'll be on their website, the school's website. And the applicants will have approximately four weeks to see that posting and fill it out. And at the same time, there will be a survey on our stakeholders to get input on this bill in terms of the process. As long as this be as transparent as possible. Call for a motion to consider approving the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three relaunch plan.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Harrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burridge. We have a motion, a second to consider the new relaunch plan. Especially going back again, um, we know that COVID certainly is not going. We're starting to see, um, surges in different parts of the country, parts of the state. Uh, we have some, I hope people have been affected by it. So we know that that's not going away. Uh, we'll get some of the things that have been identified by the next school. Obviously, the plan to change the date at the top to indicate it is for the next school year. The next thing that was changed, you know, taking it one at a time, was in the personal protective equipment. You know, right now it's optional for, it's recommended that students, employees wear face cover, but it's not mandatory. And what has been changed was, uh, the statement about exemption to face government would be required. Exemption to face government requirements will be accepted for medical conditions and will require that physician order that has been removed from the plan. Comments on that? On page two of the plan, uh, sanitation, disinfection facilities, this is the primary objective. They reduce the cleaning of the booths from recommended, um, three times a day today. Reduce the getting of trash cans. It's once a day, just say it's day, but just do it once a day. Sweep in my, our tools every day. This is what comes about custodial services. And what has been eliminated was the formal classroom and common areas as needed.
Mr. Frasier, is that just sanitation and disinfection with that, Mr. Marverson? Or is that, um, judge, or is that all?
This is C P C five on this side. So it's, um, sanitation and disinfection.
This is a change in that, because everything is going to a daily, um, frequency and the following classroom, the competitors have. The next section of sanitation, disinfection, classroom for P R C employees will have to eliminate the spot pop as needed. So they're going to be relying on our territorial services to do the spot popping as necessary.
And that's just sanitation and spot popping.
On the next, on page three, this is, um, student meals. Student meals at P R C elementary school, middle school, and the high school will be eaten in cafeteria dining areas. I think before it had some of the meals within the classrooms or whatever.
We didn't feed them the other year last year.
So right now all of you will be able to eat in the actual cafeteria. And students participating in virtual learning options will be able to pick up student meals between ten thirty and eleven o'clock a day in cafeteria or hall. So this is a distance learning at the P R C high school. High school. The high school, we don't want to have any virtual learning. Comments on that? Okay, the next page is on the communication distributed district. They changed that. Virtual distance learning options. This is a change. Program of Central High School will offer a full-time online virtual school option in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. So there is an option for virtual learning for the high school.
Is there a recent law that will open that? While they're still allowing it personally?
Right, because I would think you would be willing to get our students back in school because it, it helped us when those students were actually in class. Is there, could you explain to me what reason y'all want to keep that virtual?
Yes, for the high school, it helps with drop out for bits to, to a lot of students. There's some students who, for some reason, um, whether it's they need to work to provide money for their family or they were pregnant, um, just various reasons can't come to school. And so they'll drop out. So what we've seen last year is, um, that many of those students would come to our school. That's awesome.
Next thing, Virgo Center Elementary School and Virgo Center Middle School will not offer a virtual learning option for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. So they will not be offering option for the middle school and, um, so the elementary school. And then the next thing, student grades pre-K to twelve who cannot attend school due to health concerns or physician order may apply for homebound instructions through the Virgo Center School District Student Services. Offered by contacting Mr. Mike Housie. It's his email address. Students who qualify for homebound services may be provided with instructions for virtual learning. At Virgo Center High School, who classroom, at Virgo Center Middle School, who teaches school and will make some virtual learning options at P R C. And then the next section was a calendar. They have some modifications to the calendar. That is just a link to that access that calendar. And the last thing was school times. And that was part of something that may have been improved already. The change of school times. So Virgo Center Elementary School timed from seven thirty-five A M to two fifty P M. Virgo Center Middle School timed from seven forty A M to two forty-five P M. Virgo Center High School from seven forty A M to two fifty-one P M. And the Denver School from eight fifteen A M to two thirty P M. Those are all the changes to the, uh, relaunch plan. So each one of those sections, I don't Burridge, any one question? I don't think there was any other questions or comments. If that one had any last minute comments about relaunch plan. If not, I call for a vote. All in favor of approving the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three relaunch plan that am gonna get by saying yay.
Yay.
In the poses. There be none motion passing that. I'll be getting down to executive session. Alright, it's a call for a motion to go to closed session to determine whether you can go to the executive session.
Make a motion to go to closed session. To determine if you want to go to the executives.
Thank you, Mr. Harrow. They are second. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Call for, all in favor of going to closed session to determine whether you can go to the executive session. That am gonna get that saying yay.
Yay.
In the poses. There be none, will not in closed session.